Welcome, everyone. I call the March 1, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session on outdoor dining proposed code amendments. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing an option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom are asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those by 3:00 PM, and I know we received one, so we've seen that. Email was also encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so that everyone may follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Westerbeck.
Here.
Commissioner Kurt.
Present.
Commissioner Robson.
Here.
Commissioner Anders.
Here.
And Commissioner Augustusson.
Here.
All commissioners are present. In addition, Deputy Community Development Director Ashley Winchell and Senior Planner Kirsten Matt are attending. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second emotion, or participate in debate, and please mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff noted in 3:00 PM were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. This time is for items not on tonight's agenda. And seeing we have no members of the public in the audience, Director Winchell, have we received any comments online?
The one comment was forwarded to you all, and there are no attendees in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, so that being the case, I will end the public comment meeting as there is no public wishing to comment. Next dynamic for us is approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the February 15 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, Commissioner Westerbeck moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Jones, seconds. Discussion around the minutes. I have one minor comment. You dropped the D in Senior Planner Boyd's name on city staff present.
We'll make sure that he's Boyd, not Boy.
Yes, he is a senior planner after all. Any other comments to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. New business, is there any new business before us?
No new business.
All right, no new business tonight. Therefore, we'll move into the main item of tonight's agenda, the study session on the outdoor dining code, proposed code amendments. Senior Planner Matt, would you like to lead us through this?
Sure. So what I was hoping to do tonight, I don't have really a formal presentation since it's really code-specific, so I was going to give some background on why we're even talking about this and then kind of go into our thought process behind putting these together and go through what we've done. So as you all are probably aware, back in June of 2020, we adopted an interim temporary ordinance to allow outdoor dining that has since been renewed. Gosh, I don't even remember how many times. So the goal with these code amendments is that we don't have to keep renewing the temporary ordinance, and we can just have code that allows for these structures. I'm going to go ahead and share the code as proposed here. So some of the background of how we thought through these. In terms of the citywide code, we do already have an allowance for outdoor dining in 1206. There are no specific regulations that explicitly prohibit outdoor dining spaces to be in parking lot areas, so we didn't really feel there was a need to add additional language in that section. There is a table note associated with outdoor dining that speaks to the need for outdoor dining in sidewalk areas to not come into the five-foot walkable area, but it doesn't say anything that it has to be on the sidewalk. And so we thought for simplicity's sake, just leave that be for the citywide code. The consideration there is also that citywide, a lot of the developments by and large have quite a lot of parking. One that comes to mind that I was kind of going through and thinking of some good examples is the Outback Steakhouse in Canyon Park. It has a, it's overparked, I think, by like 10 spaces, and technically, if they wanted to, they could take up up to nine of those for three of these types of structures, and they'd still be at their normal parking amount. So that's kind of some of the thought process of keeping some simplicity with how we treated the citywide regulations. Another component is the size. So we decided to go with the 1,000 square feet in area or less because those were the size of the structures at Julio's and the cottage. They seem to be a good size. They took up three spaces, which makes it easy to kind of count how many spaces they might be in other places. So that was the size we went on for the remainder of the code sections as we were looking at this. So the first code section we looked at was wanting to make sure that we were capturing everything that was in the temporary ordinance as well as any other potential areas that might get triggered by these that may have not been considered in the ordinance. The first being in the application of the parking regulations. So we added a note here that these structures, again, the 1,000 square feet or less is associated with an existing business, are exempt from the provisions of the chapter. The goal here is really that these aren't going to be considered additions that might trigger all sorts of other requirements for additional parking spaces, potentially additional landscaping, you know, all sorts of things that a typical addition might trigger that we're not treating them that way. And this is a sentence you will have seen repeated throughout the code as it makes sense. The subsection D, we deleted because it seemed to be directly at odds with the added language. We also felt it was kind of vague and also could set a concerning precedent whenever someone wanted to convert a parking space to something else in redevelopment. So we figured that seems to be a really old piece of code. It doesn't really, we don't think it really made sense, so we are proposing to strike that. In the provision of parking table, the first thing was a personal pet peeve of mine is that a lot of our tables don't have titles. So that's going to be something I want to look at code-wide, but for this section, we figured, well, if we can, let's put it in, and then it's easier to reference rather than just being a subsection because it's not as a table. So in this one, just clarifying all of the uses that we wouldn't trigger parking for, and those already include vendor carts, but there's all sorts of other types of similar types of things we wouldn't trigger parking for, such as vendor carts, spaces, stalls, vendor trucks, and these outdoor dining areas. So creating a new line item in that table, just specifying that nothing additional is required, just to reinforce that, and then removing vendor carts from the prior line item that excludes them. We also wanted to add in a subsection that kind of is a little bit of a catch-all, so that if we have uses that come up that don't really clearly fit into any of the uses there, then we can make a decision via the Community Development Director that makes sense based on similar types of other uses that wouldn't otherwise be exempt. And that's because I think we can't always foresee some of these newer kind of pop-up style restaurants and sales uses that we want to make sure that it's, if it comes up, we know we can address it in a pretty clear way. The next section after that is just exempting outdoor dining structures from bike parking. Again, just to make it as easy as possible for these to come in, create enough. And a piece we kept hearing was equity, and so we wanted to make sure that the barriers to these were as low as possible. The next section came up in talking with some of the current planners. There were some concerns, I had asked them about this, if we had concerns about parking lot landscaping spaces, because those are there for a reason, not just for aesthetic purposes, but for stormwater purposes. So not that that has come up yet, but if there was a business that wanted to remove some parking lot landscaping areas to have some of these structures, we want to make sure that that's being captured elsewhere so they could potentially redesign the parking lot area, add some landscaping where it makes sense, potentially if, let's say, they wanted to straighten out some parking spots and not make them angled, then there would maybe be an opportunity to put some landscaping, or if they wanted to remove a strip that made it more difficult to place certain structures, then there'd be some flexibility for them to put it somewhere else. And then there were some considerations for the sub-areas because both Canyon Park and downtown have their own parking regulations, and so we wanted to make sure we captured that. One, in the Canyon Park sub-area, they have a whole applicability section, kind of similar to downtown, a little bit different, that depends on the level of improvements, from the most minimal to the most high-redevelopable. So level one is basically remodels, additions, small site improvements, less than 50% of the site. And so I added a note in there, again, reiterating that these dining space structures would be technically other, if we didn't put in this exemption, they could be considered a level-one improvement, so just putting in a qualification that that would not apply. Other section, I think that was, that was the only thing in Canyon Park because I always wanted to make sure nothing's applicable, they can do these, and then in Canyon Park, there's a lot of other items that are citywide. So where there aren't specific regulations that would apply through Canyon Park, then the citywide requirement would apply. And then downtown is where things get a little bit tricky. And so we added in, in the applicability section, again, that exemption language from the 1,000 square feet, and again, the goal is just being, we're not considering it in addition to an existing structure, is its own thing, and is exempt from the provisions of the chapter and doesn't constitute an expansion of the existing business. I did want to make a caveat for the provision of parking. I have a typo, there are 17 spaces on that site, not 16. And then in the provision of parking section, this is where we had to do a little bit of thinking in terms of the Julio's and Cottage site because they don't have enough parking technically if we were to calculate out what would be required today. So we considered that their parking situation is illegal nonconformity or grandfathered in. So in that case, I was trying to look at if we're allowing them to use these spaces, we don't want to make them have to provide those spaces elsewhere, and we won't, and we want to make sure that it's still in compliance or considered to be in compliance. So for subsection A2 here, I'm actually recommending rather than the minimum number of required parking spaces, which could create a lot of issues with trying to calculate that out. I had a lot of issues trying to figure out what all the square footages were even in that building from 1969 and subsequent renovations. We're actually recommending changing that to the existing parking spaces. So the one-third number is what I came up with from calculating it for that site and making that work. So what that just means is there are 17 spaces on the site, up to a third of those could be counted towards or could be used as outdoor dining, and for this site, that works. So there's six spaces right now that are being used for outdoor dining. So minus those six spaces, that's one-third of the 17, and they're good to go. Something that I came up when I was talking with Dave was it doesn't have to be a third. If you wanted to allow up to half, that could potentially be an option. This was just the minimum allowance in order to make that work, pretty much. And I believe that is it. I did want to also just address the letter that we got. They did have some good questions, the first one being about other restaurants that might be interested in adopting the model. We haven't heard from anybody else that hasn't already done it, so that's kind of a hard question to answer since we just haven't heard. So the interest that we've had has been what you've seen happen. Her second question, it appears that it's being limited to the Central Business District and Canyon Park because I'm not directly addressing the citywide code because, as I said before, we didn't really think it was necessary to add new code to address it. We like to keep things as simple and streamlined as possible with our code, and so we figured if it's not explicitly excluded, we don't see any reason why it couldn't be there, just so long as they're still meeting their parking minimums. In terms of how other businesses in the area are being impacted, again, we haven't heard any direct complaints or any issues from adjacent businesses or businesses in the area, so as far as we can tell, there's, has been no impact, at least that we've been able to hear. And then on the last question, why should this option to use private parking areas for businesses be limited only to restaurants? It answers, it doesn't have to be necessarily. We don't currently have anything in the retail use charts that allows outdoor sales. That said, we know that there are plenty of businesses that just have outdoor sales. I think like QFC has flowers and stuff outside. It's not creating a problem, it's not encroaching into the sidewalk, so we don't really think much about it, but if you, if it's something that wants to be more explicitly codified, that's certainly something we could look at doing too. So that's pretty much all I have in terms of the discussion, and I guess I'll open up for questions and comments.
All right, commissioners, questions, comments? Quiet tonight? Yes, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. So have you considered including a specific statement about not resulting in a net loss of accessible parking for ADA, those types of things?
Generally, the zoning code doesn't speak to the ADA standards as those would be reviewed by other divisions, and that's always something we do check for when people are requesting to utilize ADA spaces. If that's something that we think would be important to add into the land use code, we could look at doing that. I do know in the past, when I've reviewed, I'm thinking of a application to put in a big gas tank in Canyon Park for a biomed facility, they wanted to use up some parking spaces, and that's something our building division reviews, and they make sure that it's ADA compliant.
So, so I think it's, I think it's an issue just to consider just in case. I mean, I know, I know that there are, I know that you're thinking that there probably won't be additional requests from restaurants, et cetera, to do this, so you sort of know what's happening, but it is possible. I mean, the code should last for a while, right? And things can change over time, and so I do worry a little bit about ADA. But the other question I had, or really, it's a question to ask you for an explanation because I don't understand it, and that is the, so the outdoor dining structures on Main Street in the downtown sub-area zone, so those aren't in parking lots, those are in right-of-way. How, I am assuming that's not covered by this, is it covered by something else?
Main Street is kind of its own special beast. So those were originally, before we shut Main Street, those were flex spaces, I think that's what the official term is. So those were parking spaces that were permitted to be used as outdoor dining just by the nature of how Main Street was designed when it got realigned. So since it's been closed down, they've kind of sort of permanently become those outdoor dining structures, but originally, the goal was that they would be flexible spaces, usually like wintertime parking when it's eventually finally not raining, dining areas.
It's great, thank you.
Yeah, I would add one thing to that as well. So they're also in the right-of-way, and so the way right-of-way is used and the way private property is used is different. So Public Works actually would administer what happens in the right-of-way, in the street like those, and then this is on private property, so we would use the zoning code to review and allow it.
That's great, I really appreciate it, the answer. I mean, I suspected that, but I wasn't sure, so I figured I'd ask, thanks.
Yeah, I think we administer both through public area use permit, permits, but we might have created a new type for the dining area permits, but similar kind of process of these are parking spaces and how are you going to use them?
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, this is Kerry Westerbeck. I love this, I really appreciate it. I've been supportive of using the parking lots for restaurants, not only throughout the pandemic, but, but since, because it creates a really great sense of community, brings a lot more people out, it's great for the businesses, and really, it's just pure, pure dollars, it's much better for the city to, we're getting a lot more productivity out of those, those spots, having dining there than parking. Parking is really a net loss as far as financial productivity for a city. But you guys probably know that. I have a few questions and comments. The landscape thing, totally get that, especially the stormwater functions. What if, like, some of them are raised, like at Cottage and Julio, they're usually raised on piers or something like that. I don't know if this would happen very often because often they're going to have parking right, right up onto the sidewalk, but sometimes there's little islands of, especially newer developments, landscaping and then parking. What if they're floating their, building their platform over landscaping, but they're not necessarily tearing it out, but they're making it, you know, non-use, usable, you can't see it anymore, but someday it'd be torn up and it's there again with dead plants underneath. I know that's a really, you know, weird gray area, but has that been considered? Is that going to be considered loss of landscaping, do we think? Or maybe that's something we have to think about.
My initial reaction is that functionally it would be.
Yeah.
If the, if it's at least a semi-permanent to permanent structure. If it's something that's only planning, planned to be there temporarily, probably not.
Yeah.
But if it's something like we're seeing at the Cottage and Julio's where they plan on using those basically in perpetuity.
Right.
I think it would be logical to consider that a loss, even if they're not tearing it out, because like you said, it would die.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to air it out and kind of, I don't know if we have to say that, because you might get someone that says, well, I'm going to build over, I'm not going to rip it out. Well, we've accounted for that, so.
Yeah, and since it's being covered by an impervious surface, then it would, then also be considered impervious.
Yeah, most of them, if they have a cover, obviously it's going to be impervious. Some of them, of course, are just decks and the water could flow through, but that would mean that you get maybe the stormwater functions, but you wouldn't get the view.
Although we do count decks as impervious surface in the code.
I know, but you ever look underneath the deck, it's usually soaked. That used to not be that way in the codes.
Yeah.
You used to be able to count decks.
And I know, I've seen some codes where it depends on like the width of the slats.
Yeah, yeah. I'm old enough to remember permitting projects where decks weren't considered impervious, so. And gravel was half, and there's all these different rules that have changed. Anyway, doesn't matter. Anyway, I really appreciate this, I think it's really thoughtful code, and I like that we're thinking agile and ways that we can preserve these spaces for people to keep using restaurants. I was going to say, oh. The accessible spots, I think that was a really good point, Commissioner Jones. I'm really glad you brought it up. I wonder if we would say something like no net loss of more than 25% of existing accessible spaces, or just, just throwing out a number, it could be anything. You could say completely like no net loss at all, that means they just have to be moved. That's going to be two spaces lost because it's going to be, you know, a 16-foot wide spot. Well, that'd be a van space, sorry, it could be like 11 or 12 feet, so I guess they could figure it out on there, and they might lose a space and a half. But, you know, if it was a big restaurant, maybe they've got three or four, and they could, they could still meet code by having two or something like that. And I think, you know, in my experience, it's usually up to the business owner to meet the accessibility standards because they can personally get sued if they don't have the, so it's in their best interest to have those there.
Yeah, to my knowledge, when we've been reviewing these so far, we review it both for whether or not there are ADA spaces as well as ADA access to the facilities themselves.
Yeah.
So that is something that our building division looks at to ensure that anything that's getting built out there, particularly if it's something that's permanent and supposed to be accessed from the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Needs to be accessible.
Yeah, I would for sure think that, otherwise, they'd be out of compliance otherwise, but I would think if you're going to cover up accessible spaces, that's kind of a red flag, so that they have to be thinking about that. At least we have to either codify it or we have to put in a warning that, you know, you're allowed to go this much under the minimum by Bothell code, if we're even allowed to do that, I don't know if we are, but warning them that, you know, if they go below a certain threshold, they're opening themselves up to lawsuits.
I'll need to check with our building division on that, but to my knowledge, we don't have any allowances for going below the minimum.
I wouldn't think so, yeah. But we, you brought up, you know, people might be covering them, and if they're not recreating them somewhere.
Yeah, it could be something we consider on the permit checklist to make sure that they're showing both what their parking is and making sure that they're still meeting their ADA requirements.
Yeah, because I'm not going to cry over some, some normal parking spots lost, and that leads me to my next point. Inevitably, it seems like there's going to be some, at some point, restaurants that have only a half dozen spots or something, and they're saying, it would really be great if we could use half our spots, or three out of our six for this, and it would really make our, you know, enhance the neighborhood, and we'd get more business and yada, yada. I personally don't, you know, again, I think that's much more productive to have tables for people to dine at than the parking, and there's hardly any place in Bothell I've ever been that you couldn't find a parking spot. So I'm kind of wondering if we, if we think about if there's even a way to make a provision for a smaller business that doesn't have one-third to give up, but we'd still need that. Maybe they just have to do, you know, two spots, and it's 500 square feet or 600 square feet or something like that, maybe they just have to be smaller, but I just want to put it out there, like if someone says, well, I'd really like to have 1,000 square feet and max it out, it'd be so good for our business, you know, don't rein me in, still got three spots, just something to think about.
Yeah, and that was something that, like I said, I mentioned with, with Dave, and that could be something that maybe you all make a recommendation on if you'd like to increase the percentage of spaces that could be used, or if you'd like to base it on potentially the amount they already have. Maybe the threshold becomes a higher percentage if they have fewer or something to that effect.
And I'm sorry, you actually said that, one-third of current, currently existing, so I guess you did cover it, and I apologize. There we go, so if they had six, they could do two.
Yes.
If, if they only had six spots, it would lead me to believe it was a small restaurant anyway, so it might be scalable, so.
Yeah, and then they could still have the structure that be exempt because it would be below 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I think you just pre answered my question, and I just had to think through it, I apologize. That's all I've got, a moment.
Okay.
Commissioner Jones.
Just a quick follow-up. So Commissioner Westerbeck, I think though that what's still open on the table is whether we could go above a third to 50% or 40% or something like that.
Yeah, I kind of left that out there, you're right.
Yeah, and, and it is a question, right? Because, I mean, the business is the one deciding if they feel their business could accommodate more customers without causing a parking issue. So why are we limiting it to a third?
I would completely agree. I mean, many people know my opinion on parking, which is let it be discretionary to the business owner, so I'm completely behind that.
Yeah, so the reason I've started at a third is because that is, as the case study being Julio's and the Cottage, that would be the minimum amount to make their current site design work. So that's sort of the starting point to think about, are we good with that, or is there a consideration that you want to go higher, you want to make a recommendation for more?
So there certainly could be a motion to change that one-third to a different proportion. Yes.
I think one thing we need to consider though is when they're determining how much parking they need, if it's a shared parking lot, that could lead to some problems where they'll be, where they may say something like, oh, well, they can just park over at Safeway, or they could park just over, they can take some of those florist parking spaces and we'll be fine, and, you know, which may really irritate the florist who, those spots might not be used all the time, but they need their spots. And so I think that's something when we consider any kind of parking, you know, elimination, how it's going to affect the businesses surrounding them as well.
Just commenting on that, if I may, Commissioner Westerbeck, I think a lot of the businesses or like the strip mall owners and stuff apportion them out, like, oh, you've got these eight. At least that's how it is behind on the south side of Main Street. I talked to one of those business owners a few years ago, did a small project for him, and he's like, oh, these are my seven, and that's their 12, and, you know, they're all very carefully, you know, deeded. So I wonder if they'd have to have that discussion with the business owners first. Like, I've got eight to mess with, I can't touch those, I can't let people park there, I can't tell people to park there.
Yeah, and I know I can speak to. Yeah, and I know I can speak to a new development that's proposing shared parking. We have some really specific regulations as to how to manage that. But for older situations like which is most of downtown. As far as we know, they kind of figure it out themselves. It's not something that we're involved with. That could be a consideration as part of these regulations if there's something that you feel like would would maybe need to be codified in terms of figuring out how the shared use would work. I know I took a walk over to the cottage today and they have signs up that they made. So the florist has three. And then the consulting firm has three, and it sounds like that seems to be working out for them. But that is certainly not something as far as I know that we required.
I think your point is really important, though. Commissioner Robson, because we're going to see more shared parking throughout time because that's going to be one more common thing. So I think then it becomes a real issue because it's like, oh, we all share 30 spots and you're going to take up some, you know, you're going to steal from us. So I think that's a good point for any of these newer newer ideas or newer developments.
I would add to that if if they are a tenant, if they're not the property owner, they would most likely need the property owner's permission to do this in the parking lot. And so the landlord may intervene and say like, parking's too tight or, you know, we don't want that situation. So I think there might be some self policing just through the permitting process that they couldn't do it without permission of the property owner if they're just a tenant.
In that case, we might just want to, maybe we'd want to put in the code that. That that has to be worked through the owner of the parking lot. You know, that they have to have permission by the owner of the parking lot or it has to be cleared by the owner of the parking lot. It just something to, I don't know, put in to head off some of those disagreements that might might happen.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that might be a good thing to discuss with our deputy city attorney in terms of. When we're taking in permit applications for similar projects where there's a tenant owner situation. How that works and what we may or may not need to codify versus what's a part of the permit requirements. So it's something we can we can think about for sure.
So Commissioner Jones, so had did the planning department consult with any of those business owners about this percentage? Or the tenants of the properties? So I know the third came from a really great calculation and you used a really good example. But what do the businesses think?
You mean the businesses themselves?
Right, the businesses that might do this or the tenants of those properties of the the leaseholders of those properties. What do they think about the third?
You mean requirement? Potential future ones?
Yeah, or even the current ones. I mean, did you consult with them?
The current ones are really hoping to get something codified so that they can just keep doing what they're doing primarily. And then in terms of potential future tenants, like I said, we haven't heard any from anyone else. And this was a project that was mainly just trying to get some code so that the temporary ordinance could go away. But we haven't had an opportunity to do outreach to businesses.
So the the challenge that I the challenge in terms of putting forward a motion regarding this is I personally don't think I have I know enough to judge whether a third. 40%, 50%, 100% makes any sense. So I think I would need to know more about that in order to put forward a motion. I would refer, you know, defer to my colleagues if they feel that they have a better idea of how to gauge that. And so without information benchmarking, information from the folks who might actually use this, it's really hard to say. Other than the calculation. Calculation, you're right, is a really good minimum, but it's hard to know how much flexibility there is. And I think that's and I do think it's something we should find out because it would be a shame to limit it.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner.
I know I've been talking a lot. I'm sorry. Opinions on this, I guess. Just an idea. The the one third is great, I think, as a place to start. Maybe we could say as as a, you know, because code, of course, can be tweaked every time. One third is acceptable, you know, as a right or however we would say that. And up to one half with develop director permission or what we call it.
Discretion.
Discretion. There we go. Yeah, because we do have things in the code that refer to that directors. Discretion for things. So I don't know if that's a appropriate use of that kind of clause.
Yeah, it might be tricky just in terms of what would be the foundation for making that determination. Typically, for things involving parking, we would ask for a parking study, but that seems kind of onerous for something like this. So it may be a case of. You either want more information before we can make a determination or we could potentially look at. Deciding to move forward with this minimum, but knowing that in the future, there may be a point in time where that gets looked at again. That could be an option as well.
I was also going to add that Jeannie Ash, our economic development manager, has offered to reach out to some of the larger property owners that she knows to see if they think their tenants would be interested in the program. And so we can have, we can ask her if she's done that yet and get that information from her before there's before the next time we talk to you all about this.
I think that would be useful. And and as far as discretion, the the thing that I would think of based on the discussion here is whether. Adjacent businesses sharing that lot had any objections. Other Commissioners?
Commissioner Kurd? Thanks. Thanks for the presentation. I really appreciate how you laid out the code amendments really clearly. And I also appreciate that the focus of these amendments is on simplicity. And so I think that kind of fits right along with. Sort of the flexibility with allowing more than just a calculated minimum. So interested to hear on how that conversation evolves. Couple of questions. One, kind of piggybacking off of the accessibility standards. Just not to beat a dead horse, but a lot of the accessible parking spaces for businesses are close to the entrance. And could probably be seen as the most convenient spots for outdoor dining. And so I do just want to lend my voice to that as well. Seeing some sort of written protection, even if it's assumed just for some of the messaging around that. The other thing is probably not really so much as zoning as it is a. Operations or a management of it. And so this might be. Out of hand, but for the stormwater purposes. Outdoor dining spaces might not be seen as. Non pollution generating surfaces because of food waste and debris. Possibly being washed into stormwater systems. And so I would. I I wonder, I don't think that this breaks anything or that things have been going wrong. But I I'm wondering about if there's been any source control issues with outdoor dining. And if surface water has any considerations while we look at transferring the temporary ordinance into something more permanent. So that's just something that I'd be interested in in learning more about.
Yeah, and that's something we can definitely check with our stormwater division on and see if they've had any issues. Or they could potentially even go out there and maybe speak with some of the property owners about their cleaning standards and if they're, you know, hosing it down or if they're having issues with that. So that's something we can definitely follow up with.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, the businesses want those places to be appealing. So I'm sure that they keep them clean, but I'm just wondering how they keep them clean. Thanks.
And it seems to me that Commissioner Kurd's concern would go to a maintenance issue and possibly. Involve health department and those food establishments are inspected on some basis. So I wonder whether there are any differences in how they look at those sorts of outs outdoor dining spaces as opposed to indoor. Read some terrible stories about things in New York City, but that's a whole different.
Their outdoor permitting world is a nightmare, let me tell you.
Again, from the my the the permit, the permit files. I'm I'm sure Deputy Director Winchell and Planner may not know this, but the code usually requires that accessible spaces be as close as possible, as close as practical or something like that. So it's almost assured we're going to see some accessible spaces applied to this to covered, I guess you would say. But one of these days, we're going to see this, I think, because the requirement for them to be close, like you said.
Other Commissioners? And just to kind of take off on something Director Winchell said. So this does not address some of the uses that we've seen in the right of way. And those would continue as they did previously?
Yes, those those I believe would be addressed by a different section of code that would be administered by Public Works. It may require the same type of permit, but would would be.
Yeah, and that is how we permit, like when we have like a food truck that wants to come into a parking space. We already have an avenue for permitting those in the public right of way as well as in the private areas as well. Like if you have a. I think that's what we did, not on EFG because that's city owned. But if you have, you know, gravel covered area in your parcel and you want to allow someone to have a food truck there, you would come in for one of those permits.
Thank you. Other Commissioners? So I heard some discussion, not a lot of specific changes, maybe a little more information. But that mean our next step is move into public hearing?
Yeah, if you feel comfortable moving to that as the next step, we can certainly do that. And I will, we'll start running this through the process with our legal department and getting something on the books.
That sounds good. Thank you for the presentation. All right, that will close out that agenda item. Next item, unfinished business. Do we have any?
No unfinished business.
No unfinished business. That's a good thing. Reports from staff.
Yeah, so a few things. Last week, we interviewed consultants for the historic preservation role at the city. We had three great interviews. We're moving forward with a contract. And so once we are in contracting, we'll let you know who the firm is and are working on figuring out how that process will work. But they'll be picking up the historic preservation element of the comprehensive plan. Telling Bothell's full story and then our permitting process and landmark preservation board. So we're really excited about that. Last night, City Council approved the comprehensive plan contract with Burke. So that's really exciting. We had a small contract to get things started, but by no means was going to get us to the finish line. So now we have a contract that should get us to the finish line or really close to the finish line. Things always happen and there's always a contract amendment or two. So but we are going to get there with this next contract. Staff is going to be providing City Council with an update to the middle housing schedule as they requested and a contract with OTAC to complete that work. So that is coming forward on March 7. There's a middle housing walking tour plan for March 18, which is a Saturday from 10 to 12. We are also working on Sarah Frost is working on getting our engagement portal put together. So that'll be really important for the comprehensive plan and then hopefully for some of our middle housing engagement we're doing between now and council review. Last night, we also presented the planning docket to City Council. They're going to be making a decision on that, we believe, on March 7. And then finally, there's lots of legislation going on at the state. The probably most, the biggest one of interest to you all would be HB 110. Which 110, 1,110, 1110, thank you, way better. I was trying to think of how to say that number. 1110 would allow or actually require cities to allow middle housing. Cities, I think, over 25,000 and under 75,000 would have to allow at least a duplex on every lot. And then I believe it's a for it's changed, but I think it's a fourplex within a certain distance of transit and there's some affordability requirements. So it's not quite as to the level of what was recommended out of Planning Commission. But that is something that's coming and so we've been following it closely to see how that impacts what's proposed. And so if it does end up changing anything that's been proposed by Planning Commission, we you may see us again with that. If we need to make tweaks to be in compliance with the state regulations. So that is a quick overview of just what is going on in community development right now.
All right, thank you. Reports from members. Anything to share? Looking down the table, seeing none. Okay, we'll have a very quick meeting tonight then. And I don't see that we have anything to report to council at this point. So unless there are any other comments, there being no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Kurd?
This is Carsten. So moved.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Westerbeck seconds motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's unanimous. So the meeting is adjourned at, boy, 6:45 this evening. Yes, perhaps a new record. Our next meeting will be March 15. So see you all then.